Call the spinning to order. For Franklin County Commissioners, Wednesday, January fourth, 2023, eight thirty-eight. Roll call.
Commissioner Sotomayor?
President.
Commissioner Harris?
President.
Chair Dunn?
President.
Vice Chair Dickinson?
President.
Commissioner Waymeyer?
Here.
Please rise for the President, please, and stay. Stay risen for the invocation.
For our commissioners. Hope we're having a great new year. We're getting, hopefully getting a good start. Let's pray together. Lord, we thank you for the things that you give to us. I'm thankful for the place in which we live, this county, and I pray for the folks of our county as they, many of them are still dealing with colds and whatnot, and, Lord, we just pray for them. We pray for those who are dealing with mental issues, those that are homeless, those are just struggling right now. We just pray that the new year will bring them some good news. Lord, we just pray that we continue as a county to move forward. Thank you for the commissioners. I know there's hard decisions that have to be made sometimes, not as popular, but, Lord, we just pray that you continue to watch over them, give them wisdom and guidance, and we thank you for them. We ask you to be to their families and watch over them in this new year, keep them happy and healthy and growing, and just watch over us. Be with each of the workers of our county, those that are out there around the county getting the jobs done. We thank you for them, and we just ask you to continue to keep them safe as well. Thank you again for this great place we live, this openness, this great community in which we live, and, Lord, we just wish hope for a really great new year. We pray these things in your name. Amen.
Okay, Derek Kenny.
No, sir.
Okay, public comment today? Okay, it says on wishing, desiring to speak on an item not on the agenda may do so at this time. Discussion is limited to five minutes, and the commission will not take action or discuss items at this time. Discussions are limited to matters of county commission business, and public comment is not permitted in regard to personnel matters or impending legal matters. Items introduced under public comment may become an agenda item at a later date.
Norman Woogie?
Norman Woogie, thirty-seven, ninety, Pawnee Road. It'd be nice if he had a clock up there where we could tell where we were at. In January is the time for real organization. You know that as well as I do. Time and place is set for this commission meet. How does it bear when the commission meets elsewhere, not even in the county? You are all assessors of this fact. You are all chosen by the people because we trusted you. I was disappointed last Wednesday when I came to this meeting, to that meeting. I was told the meeting was canceled because you guys are special. People were taking the new floor up in the hallway out here, and I watched them a little bit. I brought in six different samples of what we expect and the county expects for a county building. I did not know the commission meeting scandal with those six samples there, quality program. My friends put the floors down, and this building deserves and needs that good material. I think that some of you would be interested enough and responsible to watch how the Ninoian crap was installed. There's usually a concrete board put down as a barrier. Who leads this commission? Evidently, you are good followers. We need leaders. Macromatch. Macro manage. You hear this thing, oh, you're micro managing. Well, you need to do some managing anyway. On another issue, when a person is speaking, they should not be verbally interrupted. The right to speak is guaranteed by our U.S. Constitution. You all need to watch, read, and learn. By doing this, will you do a better job for us and not create those disasters? Hire competent, conscientious people that can get the job done and get rid of the ones that can't do the jobs that they're assigned to. If you have any question, I'm open for probably not.
Norm, what was your first question when you stepped up there? What was the first question you asked when you stepped up there?
He didn't know.
You said something about the time?
Oh, yeah.
There's a clock right there.
Clock right there.
Oh, there. Well, it'd be nice up there. I don't see the best.
Okay. I didn't quite understand. Thank you.
Anyone else, Janet? Okay, consent agenda, we'll consider approved claim vouchers in the amount of one hundred and thirty-four thousand, eighty-four dollars, eighty-eight cents. Tax change orders, seven hundred and eight dollars and fifty-four cents. County commission meetings of December twenty-first, twenty-two, and consider approval payroll for the paper November twenty-first to December twentieth, twenty-twenty-two, of one million, two hundred and thirty-four thousand, sixty-four dollars and thirty-three cents, and consider improved emergency vehicle permits. Do you have a list of permits, people? The ones, the ones we're gonna do today?
You have them right there, the first eight.
First eight? Does anybody want to know who that is? That's for the... Okay. For the rural fire departments, right, Janet?
I'm here to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Commissioner Sotomayor?
Yeah.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson?
Yeah.
Commissioner Waymeyer?
Yes.
Chair Dunn?
Yes. Anybody else has their electronic device on? Would you turn it off, please? I have some business. Number one, it's a theater zoning. We got a new face today. Wanna come on up?
How is everybody?
Hey, Pat.
Morning, Pat.
Hey, Pat. No pressure.
Oh, yeah. No. Fortunately, we have a pretty, I believe we have a pretty simple one. Hopefully not a lot of discussion on it, hopefully.
Clock right there if you need it, too, Pat.
Say what?
Clock right there if you need.
I got my five minutes. Okay. So today, we are considering approval of twenty-two, eleven, dash, twenty-ten Oswald to rezone approximately five acres off of an existing tract of a hundred and forty-eight, or I believe it's a hundred and fifty-three now, and it will become a hundred and forty-eight. The neighboring, adjacent neighbor would like to gain five acres to add to his property, and it will then become, that five acres needs to go from A-one to RE. The planning commission really did not have much to say or discuss. There was nobody that came to for or against. The planning commission did unanimously vote to consider approval for the proposal. It meets all the criteria as far as the golden rule and the community area. It's already broken off. It doesn't really make any concerns for any of the surrounding neighbors. There is no significant interruptions for the area.
Do you know, they just want a bigger yard, or is there a function like sanitary or a reason for it?
So my first thought was something to that nature, and looking back, it basically, I believe it is just a bigger yard. I think the owner of the property just wants more, maybe a bigger garden or whatnot.
Yep.
It is a bit scrunched right there, and so bringing it to the south would give him some room to whatever he wants to do if he's wanting to add a shop. The other thing about this is there is an existing structure that does not conform to our existing zoning regulations on setbacks. Bringing this property line to the south will actually add room so that the shop will now be in compliance with our zoning regulations for setbacks. So it does improve the situation overall.
Sounds good. Good. Any other questions, Pat? Okay, as specific action, may I make a motion to approve rezoning application twenty-two, eleven, dash, twenty-ten Oswald to rezone approximately five point oh-three-one acres from the A-one agriculture district to the RE residential state district, and to amend the official county zoning act accordingly. Motion approved.
Second.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson?
Yeah.
Commissioner Waymeyer?
Yes.
Commissioner Sotomayor?
Yeah.
Chair Dunn?
Yes.
Hey, couple of things while we have Pat up here. This was a fairly straightforward one. We're gonna have a couple in the next few weeks that are a little more complicated. Just want the five of you to know that Kenny and Dee, particularly Kenny, had pretty much all of the communication with the applicants, with the requisite parties to these, and Pat's really been brought in here very, very recently. So you might just keep that in mind as we go through these. We have a file. Kenny did a great job. They're studying the file, but you might just have some grace and some patience with Pat and Dee because, again, Kenny had most of these conversations himself, and Kenny was good at his job, took pretty good notes, but I just, until Dee and Pat start having these conversations themselves, there's going to be a bit of a, you know, there, it's gonna be a bit of a transition for them.
On top of being our only building inspector.
Oh, absolutely. And the other thing you'll know, and they've both worked incredibly well with me, this is not as robust a staff report as you used to get from Kenny. It's my intention to keep it that way moving forward. If you, the feedback I've gotten from all of you is that there was so much before that it was overwhelming. I am more of a meat and potato, straight to the point. Here's the relevant information. I think the five of you are, too, but if, as we start doing this, if you want more information, please let us know. But, yeah, that's...
To the agenda being published ahead of time, these being attached, if there are any, I mean, we review it ahead of time. If we have any questions, we gotta usually half a week at least to... Perfect.
But I do wanna commend Pat and Dee because they've both stepped up. They want the challenge of taking this on and rolling with it. So we're gonna let them do it and see how it goes.
Appreciate that.
Yeah, not a problem.
Everybody has the...
Learning all the jobs.
...department to do all this.
Well, and we've got a new sanitaryian that has been leaning on you a lot as well. So it's got a... On Pat's plate right now.
To me, what the, what the planning commission, what their opinion was, and the pictures, I really like the pictures, really say a lot about what we're doing. So those are the most important things to me.
That's what we're gonna keep rolling with, is visuals. It seems that we're very visual-oriented, and so we're gonna continue.
Because that says a lot about what we're doing.
Correct.
Yeah. Awesome. Good job.
I bet. Hey, Janet, this is for you. The next one, consider resolution waiving the general accepted accounting practices requirements for the twenty-twenty-three.
Good.
So this is something we do annually. We waive the general accepted accounting principles because Kansas, under statute, follows the cash basis law. So this is something that we're required to do annually, that our auditor wants to see from us. So this is the first meeting of the year. So this is before you to waive these principles so we can continue to operate under the statutes of the cash basis law.
Pretty straightforward. Pause the motion. May I make a motion to adopt the resolution waiving the gap requirements for the twenty-twenty-three financial statements?
Second. Commissioner Dickinson?
Yeah.
Commissioner Waymeyer?
Yes.
Commissioner Sotomayor?
Yeah.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Chair Dunn?
Yes.
Hey, David, we gotta talk about road projects and stuff.
Yeah, so it is that time of year where we try to get our chip seal project out on the street ahead of the pack so that hopefully we take advantage of getting a number of bidders and good prices. This year's project is approximately forty-four miles, mostly consolidated up in the north and northwest quadrants of the county. This is following the progression of, around the county with these chip seal miles. We have driven those, all of these miles, and they are definitely in need of putting the chip seal down. We will, after we get through this process, will analyze those miles. There's, I know that there's gonna be some areas where we do some blade patching ahead of that. We will also inspect all of the crossroad tubes along that route and make sure that any of those that need to be replaced, that that work is completed prior to the chip seal going down, because we don't wanna, certainly don't wanna put brand-new chip seal down and then go in and replace it covert. So we'll be doing that work in the coming weeks and months. But the first step is to get this published and get this advertised, make contact with the folks that have historically bid on these projects, and then ultimately get the bids back. So we're proposing, like I said, the forty-four miles, and we'll be publishing in the newspaper, which is a little more cumbersome these days since the, our local newspaper only prints once a week. So we'll work through that process, but we anticipate having a bid opening on January twenty-seventh in the clerk's office. Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions, David? Good to get started with this process.
Yeah. It's not likely, you know, the work is not likely to be done until sometime July or after, but we like to be, if we can, be at the front of the line as far as projects go, and this certainly gets us in, into that avenue by going so early.
Okay. Pause the motion. May I make a motion to, for, make a motion for the solicitation of bids for the Franklin County twenty-twenty-three chip seal project?
Isn't, go ahead. Isn't Chef Steel in city limits?
It is, but the right-of-way is not.
Huh, okay. Curious.
And so we'll go all the way down to, it's not quite down to Pawnee. It's actually to the north side of the North American Eagle Building, but we'll do from there north.
Interesting. All right. Second.
Okay.
Commissioner Waymeyer?
Yes.
Commissioner Sotomayor?
Yes.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson? Chair Dunn?
Yes. We'll consider painting the...
Yeah, so we're gonna put some new chip seal down, and we'd like to put stripes on it. There's only one little section of road in a subdivision that's got two houses in it that we won't paint. Everything else will be, will have the white lines on the side along with the centerline markings as a part of this project.
Okay, pretty straightforward. Any questions about the paint? Okay, pause the motion. May I make a motion to solicit, for the solicitation of bids for the Franklin County twenty-twenty-three paint, payment, pro-marketing, the paint, payment, marking project?
Second.
Commissioner Sotomayor?
Yeah.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson?
Yeah.
Commissioner Waymeyer?
Yes.
Chair Dunn?
Yes. Next, the Lake Region Solid Waste Management Plan.
Yes, commissioners, this is something else that we do, that we're required to do by state statute every year. And so this plan is just updating the twenty-two plan, which is, there really weren't any changes, but we have to go through this process by state statute. Later this year, we will be undergoing a major review and where we will really analyze and update this, this plan more thoroughly, that we're required to do, I believe it's every five years, and so that is scheduled for twenty-twenty-three. We, as a Lake Region, will be working on that collectively in the coming months, but this, what's before you right now is, is just a procedural thing that we're required to do. There hasn't been any changes since the last, since we did this last year. It's more or less a formality, but I would be happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Any questions?
I don't even have a question, but if I was an outsider looking at it, I understand it. If you look at all the figures, everything, then we go up to eighteen, and that's because it's just, this is just a review. And when we go to the five-year plan, then it'll take it on up to twenty-three. That's why a lot of people will look at it, well, why come you ain't went past eighteen? Well, that's what we're basing it all on.
The first one of these that, that I looked at when I started this job, I wanted to, I provided updated numbers and everything else, and was told that, no, we'd do that every five years instead of...
That'd be the first person's question, is, when they look at the document, why did, why did you stop at eighteen? So this is just a, it's just an update, and then every five years, you take in the next five years.
Yes, sir.
Okay, affirmative motion. May I make a motion to approve the resolution adopting the revised Lake Region Solid Waste Management Plan dated December twenty-twenty-two? So move.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson?
Yes.
Commissioner Waymeyer?
Yes.
Commissioner Sotomayor?
Yeah.
Chair Dunn?
Yes. Okay, staff reports. Eric, you wanna start us off?
Yeah, just a couple of things. You can see that Advent has started work down on the south end of the annex. They have all of that space under lease, but as we've discussed, we wanted to take the opportunity since they're essentially making it one suite to redo their lease. I have been negotiating that with them. We discussed ways, you know, we knew we needed to raise rent. We tried to tie it to a mechanism. There's just no great one. So I proposed to them a ten percent increase because it's been at least five years. They've agreed to that. I've also built in a two percent annual escalator that is right in the lease. It automatically does it. They have agreed to that as well. They have made some changes. We historically do five-year leases for accounting purposes. They've asked for three-year leases. I don't have an issue with that because they're, they wanna be here, and I believe them because they are investing a lot of money in the building, so don't have any issue with that. It's a little nuanced because the stairs to our upstairs portion are down in that space, but we'll need access to that, but they want twenty-four hours notice, which is not, that's nothing we can't do. We don't ever urgently, or rarely do we urgently need in that space. There's nothing else in here that I find particularly troubling with the board's permission, and Roy will need to execute it, but if you have no heartburn about it, then I'll probably go ahead and try to get these changes finalized and have the lease executed this week. For perspective, we'll be renting at thirteen dollars per square foot at this point. So, any questions?
So the lease would be just for the whole footprint of Advent Hill? Okay.
Yeah.
We need a motion to do anything?
Well, no.
Consensus.
Yeah, just a consensus.
I think we go forward with that.
Okay. I appreciate that. And then this afternoon, we've discussed briefly Franklin County, as well as most of the counties in the state, are receiving opioid settlement funds. Big lawsuit against major pharmaceutical manufacturers. We joined the attorney general suit and were awarded. The amount is still up in the air, but we believe it will be between thirty-six and thirty-seven thousand dollars. This afternoon, I'm sitting down with, who I believe are all of the interested parties within the organization. Sheriff's Office will be there. Ambulance will be there. The Health Department will be there. The county attorney will be there, just to have a discussion on what is the best use of those funds, because like every other community in the country, we battle, you know, those issues, and so we wanna make sure that we have a well-thought-out use for that and that we can stretch it as far as we can. So just know that those discussions are being had, and that's all I have this morning.
Okay, thank you, Eric. Paul, do you wanna talk to us about anything?
Morning, commissioners.
Good morning.
A couple of things. One, we got notification from the state yesterday that they're issuing second round on the base grant. You may remember that the City of Ottawa wanted a pretty significant grant on that from round one. Welsville did submit in round one, and they can resubmit in round two, which I'm sure they'll do. And then I'm exploring, Commissioner Dickinson, if FCDC might submit a small one on behalf of Princeton for their stormwater issue. So I'm working through that, see if that's something we can get done. The strange thing with these is they, they have a bunch of steps to go through, but the deadline's the twenty-first. They just told us yesterday, so, but we'll see if we can't get something in there for Princeton. And I don't have the year-end financials yet. Probably hopefully bring some report to you on that as far as how's FCDC finished twenty-twenty-two, but I'm excited. It's the Fourth of January, and we've already, can't account for about fifteen thousand dollars of revenue that's not in my budget. So we're already to the good of fifteen thousand, four days in the year. And what that comes from is, we submitted with the help of the accounting firm, since I didn't lay myself off, we get PPP money, since I didn't get laid off during COVID. And so we got two checks, one last month for a little over seven thousand that went in the last year's budget, and then I got another check for another seven thousand plus. That'll go into this year's budget. And then, thanks to our development as an e-community, I was able to sell about twenty-seven thousand in tax credits, which means FCDC and e-community will get a check in January for a little over eight thousand. So there's the seven and the eight, so a little over fifteen thousand that wasn't in the budget. That'll be coming in. So we're off to a great start from a financial standpoint for, for FCDC. And, and quite honestly, since, since I came on board in twenty-nineteen, we've been able to increase revenues from the non-county and Ottawa pockets. So we've been able to keep all of that flat, and we've generated a lot more revenue from private memberships. We were at sixty-two, and now we're at ninety. Hope to be at a hundred by the end of the year. And then these other things, a lot of grant work we've done and, and different initiatives we've taken advantage of. So very proud that we've continued to grow, but not at the expense of the county or the City of Ottawa. Also wanna appreciate the City of Welsville increased their giving last year, and Princeton has since joined as well. So very pleased with the progress we're making on the financial side of FCDC as well. So happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thanks, Paul. Pat, anything else?
Yes, sir.
Okay, sure.
Good morning. I just have one thing to let you guys know about, and that is that Lieutenant Alexander, who is our jail commander, will be attending Command School, which is also part of KU's Public Management Center, to go through the Certified Public Manager Program. And in law enforcement, through the Law Enforcement Leadership Academy, we, they combine Command School and the Certified Public Manager Course, and she'll be going through that starting this month. It is a, the total length of the, of that program is a year, and it's a great program. This county has sent several people through that program in, in the past in my office. Currently, my... Currently, myself and undersheriff Flashwell have, have both attended that and now we, we wanted to get Tammy through that. So she'll be doing that starting, starting this month. Just wanted you guys to, to know what, that, what she'll be, what she'll be doing. It's a very good program. It's pretty intense. It has a capstone project at the end of it. It does, you do get some graduate level credit from KU through that and it's a good program. And we appreciate the opportunity that, that we have to send our people to that. So that's all I have unless you guys have questions for me.
Have a good non-event, New Year's Eve and all that.
For the most part, yes. Yes.
Good deal. David?
Commissioners, I wanted to give you an update on road and bridge projects through the month of December. Just some stats from our new public, Pub Works software. From a blading standpoint, we bladed 659 sections of road. We had 10 culvert-related projects, seven ditching projects. We added gravel to 34 sections of road. We had 69 sign-related projects that we worked on. That's everything from inspecting to replacing signs, those sorts of things. We removed trash from 15 different locations and we had 22 brush and tree-related projects we worked on during the month of December. I will start providing you kind of this kind of monthly update each month. And as we learn the software, there may be other things that, that come along with that. Also wanted to update you on the surplus items that went through an auction here yesterday, as a matter of fact. The items that we had, except for the IT items, which will be on, in an auction on January 31st. The other items from the health department EMS, the appraiser's office and public works netted just over $66,000. And as I get more information and, and the checks start rolling in, I will divvy that up between the various departments. I wanted to give you an update on the, the storm that happened just before Christmas. Our guys started working that storm on around 6 o'clock on the 22nd and we ran three shifts and finished up. That was on, on Thursday morning. We finished up Friday afternoon. Fortunately, knock on wood, we didn't have any equipment issues with the extreme temperatures. We're very fortunate in that regard. And then on Monday, there was some ice that came through and we had a crew that worked almost a full shift taking care of that as well. And then we are, you know, first of the year types of things. We're also looking at spring cleanup days, reaching out to the smaller communities to visit with them, coordinating with the City of Ottawa and those sorts of things. So in the coming weeks, we'll have that in front of you to, to consider as well. That's all I have today.
I have a question. I was at the recycling center yesterday and the parking lot was wet. Are we anywhere, getting anywhere else? I, I know I started talking about that when I started as commissioner four years ago, that, that parking lot just needs help.
So that is, is part of a larger discussion. And we, we have, we have started that discussion in '22 and, and I hope here in the next month or two that we decide on a, on a direction. I think that we've got a different layout planned for that site that involves relocating the drop-off area to the south, to the southern side of the building. And a part of that would be ultimately an asphalt parking lot driving area. Due to the funding and some of those things and the high costs, I kind of postponed some of those discussions, but we will be kicking that off here in the, in the near term.
Awesome. Thank you.
Okay, Janet? Good Commissioners.
No, we haven't had too much going on in the meetings wise. This afternoon, I do belong to the Merzine Basin Advisory Board, so we'll be down in the Ojo calling. We meet quarterly and I will be meeting out there this afternoon. Well Derek, I'll touch on what he said. I advise everybody to look at the minutes from, from the planning board meetings. I mean, the only reason, I took a more personal answer, I don't go to all planning board meetings, but I did take an interest in the one that's coming up because it's in my district and my neighborhood has an impact on them. So I have, this tender left me and they put it off for two months. They're going to bring it up again. So that tells you right there, it's a long, drawn-out discussion. So I advise you to look the minutes over. They don't tell you everything, but if you can't, don't attend meetings. At least it gives you some, a little bit of a background and idea because you know all the people that give conversation and talk won't be here. And we're not going to sit here, that went on for two to three hours. So we know we're not going to hear two to three hours of conversation. And we'll, I think it'll be a little time, I mean, because it's that big of a deal, but it won't be two or three hours. And the minutes that Dee did is very to the point. They're lengthy, but it gives you a better idea or a clue of conversation that goes on. And, and kind of like Derek said, Kenny won't be here to give you that connection. And a lot of that had to do with talking to people and dealing with people and all things. It'll be a pretty drawn-out thing, so I advise you, if you get a chance to, I know they're lengthy, but to look, look the minutes over.
The only thing I attended in the last couple of weeks was Princeton, the Princeton Monthly Meeting on Monday and they didn't have a whole lot of, just dealing with the same issues. And then just going back to Advent Health, they're putting over $5 million in between the building at Ninth Street, Ninth and Main and then this building. And you kind of forget that those are both county-owned buildings. So they're investing $5 million in our buildings. And then one of the things that they said at the last hospital board meeting was when they were working on that building at Ninth and Main, they had a water main issue, I think, and it was $55,000 that we didn't have to worry about because they, they take care of that too. So it really, they, they are, and they are having an open house. So the, the building at Ninth and Main is only half done, but they are having a chamber of coffee, I think, toward the end of the month. If so, if you don't get a chance to get in there before then, that would be an awesome time to see what's going on. And that's all I have.
Okay, cool.
I don't need to share. Thanks.
Okay. Well, I don't have anything, but next Monday, we got reorganization. Janet, are you going to be swearing in the Commissioners and anybody else next, next week too, at the same time?
Yep.
Okay.
Ball out at the same time.
Okay. Anything else, Derek, or anything? Okay. Entertained a motion to adjourn. Second, we're adjourned.